To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations made elsewhere this week. On May 14th, 2020, I presented Proclamations honoring Electric Line Worker Appreciation Day and National Public Work Week 2020 for the week of May 17th to 23rd of 2020. We want to thank both the Public Works Department and the electrical line workers for the important work that they continually do, but also during this difficult time with responding to environments that are new and unusual. City manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first one is that, just as a reminder, this Monday is Memorial Day, so the city offices will be closed on that day. Most of them are closed to the public, but for call-ins and anything else. The good news, this is really good news, the governor did modify his reopening restrictions, including the ability for Santa Barbara County to not, and I have that in capitals, include the federal prison infections in what we consider the community numbers. It's everybody that's not in the federal prison. This change has now allowed Santa Barbara County to meet the Phase Two requirements for reopening. In fact, the Board of Supervisors in their meeting today confirmed the attestation, or confirmation, of the public health officer that the county has met all of the necessary guidelines to begin the reopening. This attestation, attestation, was sent to the governor immediately after confirmation for the state to review and send back confirmation that Santa Barbara County may begin the reopening. We hope to have a response from the state within one to three days, which was their timeline. So hopefully more good news by Friday at the latest. So it could be tomorrow, it could be Friday. We'll have more news as we can. We'll put it out on the website. In order for a business to reopen, the county has begun crafting a business, also a business self-attestation, I can't say the word, attestation, for each business to complete prior to reopening. The draft that I was shown, it's a very simple process, probably takes less than 10 minutes to complete. Once completed, the business owner would then print it, he would print out a certificate, or she would print it out, and they would just need to post that certificate for the public to see that they are open for business and they meet all the guidelines. There will be, for the current period though, still some restrictions such as social distancing, restaurants, retail, and whatnot. But we've not yet seen the final procedures that will need to be followed. As soon as we have them, what we will do is we'll post it all on the city website. But it is changing almost daily. So I actually had a meeting with staff yesterday, and today it changed. So please stand by, watch and listen for the updates. It should be coming from Santa Barbara County Health. Again, as soon as we get anything, we'll update the city's COVID website with as much information as possible, and as soon as it becomes available. Something fun to do in the community is, the Lompoc community is invited to play what's being called Clue, the Lompoc Recreation Division Edition. So beginning Monday, May 18th, and running through Friday, May 29th, amateur detectives are invited to find clues hidden at Centennial Square, Ryan Park Trail, Ryan Softball Field, Lompoc Aquatic Center, Beatty Park Fallen Warriors Memorial, and the Beatty Park Walking Trail to help solve the mystery in this special game of Clue. Participants are asked that while playing Clue, the Lompoc Recreation Division version, they maintain appropriate social distancing and not touch or remove the clues. And if you just check the city's website, it'll have the details of how to sign up and play the game. New dates for a next blood drive at the Anderson Rec Center is June 17th and July 1st. Please help by donating. I just donated the last one they had there, and I'll do as soon as I can. For those wanting COVID testing, it's also at the Anderson Rec Center, Friday to Tuesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. If you want to schedule an appointment, please call. I'll go slow, it's 1-888-634-1123. That was 888-634-1123. Lastly, please remember to do your census. The more people that fill out the census, the better it is for the city of Lompoc. And that was it.
Councilmember Mosby.
Can you fill us in on how's it going about opening, like, City Hall, the pool, the library, or where we're sitting right now?
So, the easiest one is the pool. That's going to be most likely Phase Four. It's has the humidity, the water enclosed, so it hasn't hit there yet. So we haven't really done too much on that one. The library, I've been meeting with our librarian, and we have a phased opening. They're going to be starting with the collection. They have about 8,000 different items out there. So they're going to start collecting those in, they have to start sanitizing them. The National Library Association has given out some types of procedures for cleaning. It's about a three-day process. So it'll, they'll come in, they'll sit one day in probably the Grossman Center, then they start wiping them down after the first 24 hours, and then they'll set them back out on the shelving. Then they're going to move to the electronic version, where you can go on, check out a book, you actually would come up to the doorway, they'll have it ready for you, and then you can go on your way. The next version is that we're still discussing how to do it, is to allow appointment only, so maybe up to 30 people, we don't have a particular number in mind, would be allowed in for a one-hour time period to pick books out, not to sit and read and enjoy them, but you'd have to pick them out. And then after that one hour, we would then close the doors, do some sanitizing, and then open for the next group that comes in and do that. And then finally, the last phase would be to open it up as we were doing before. But that all depends on the governor, because it is a place of congregation, so we have to wait for that phase to happen. City Hall, we met just this week with staff from all the different departments for the lobby area on how we're going to do that. We're looking at some basic reconfiguration, the center cubicle, I'll be bringing this up to council, but the idea was to take that out, where Connie, our receptionist, had been sitting, we have a space for her on the other side of the counter. In order to do proper social distancing at the counters, we can't, it sort of winds around, so you have to have something there. We can do straight lines, six feet apart. So we're going to be looking at that. We'll be looking at adding some additional plexiglass along the front, like you see in grocery stores and other places. And we're up to that part so far. So as soon as we get confirmation from the governor's office, then we can, you know, move forward. And we're still working, facilities are working out the costing for that now. That would come out of the utilities fund, because 99% of the funds over there, work is being done with utilities. So that'll come out of that, not the general fund. And that's about where we are today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Jim, how are we communicating with the state? We sent a letter in, I think, prior to the last council meeting, and we're still waiting for a response. So it's good news so far that we're just waiting for a positive response. So who's the contact here at the city for, and we're just waiting, or is someone in communication with whoever's sending the letter back?
Yeah, so that all went, it did focus, and it all, every city did it, and so it all went through the county. So now we're just waiting for the county to hear back from the state. So I was on, watching their presentation today, and the board did approve it. So they're sending up the whole package to the state today. So today, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we as a county should hear something back from the state. We're the second in line, that was the other good part. We had ours ready to go last night. It wasn't official, so the public health officer sent it up to the state as a draft, but it put our place in line as number two. And then when they approved it today, they sent the official, same version, but sent the official copy up there. So we maintain our place number two in line for reviews. So we should be hearing back much sooner than the other 58 counties or 56 counties.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. We'll be moving on to a public comment on the consent calendar item. For those that would like to call in on any item for tonight's meeting, please note the number is 805-875-8201. And you will need to mute your volume on your PC, TV, or radio to reduce the feedback. And again, the number's 805-875-8201. This first item is public comment on consent calendar items. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Any public comment on consent calendar? Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I move that we accept consent calendar.
I'll second that. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And now we have a staff presentation from the utility department personnel regarding council requests for installation of generators at city facilities.
Good evening, council, public. Today, we're bringing back a council request on, report on battery storage and generators for the city facilities. We're going to do this in two shots. Tonight, I'm going to present a small presentation on generators for the city, and then in a few months, we'll come back on a report on battery storage. We are required by the state to look into battery storage every few years. So we're working with a consultant, and when the report comes back, we'll present that to council. Like I said, it's a short presentation, and this is my presentation. This is, this is a table with all our city facilities, the generators available, the fuel type, and also the runtime. I'll put it in alphabetical order. But essentially, most of our city facilities, for example, utilities, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, Tap TV radio transmission site, even a well site, they're all have their own backup generators. Landfill has its own as well, fire station, and also police department and city hall has its own dedicated generator that we could use in a power outage. Airport as well. There are few facilities that currently do not have a backup source, Anderson Rec Center, Aquatic Center, library, and Dick DeWes. I know city's priority at the moment is procuring Dick DeWes. I spoke with facilities this morning, and they are in design phase to get that generator. That's all I have available for any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Is the runtime determined by fuel?
The storage, yes.
So that's what determines the runtime here, then?
Councilmember Mosby.
Do you have any idea why the Dick DeWes Community Center was, never had a generator installed? No idea? It's the FEMA triage center, right, for the city? Is that, that's what I've been told?
Yeah, FEMA would like to use it. This time, we were using it as our temporary EOC. No, it would be nice. It's stubbed out for a generator. Why, when it was built and remodeled, I don't know why they didn't put one in.
Yeah.
We're working on, as Teakin said, we have funding through CDBG to do the analysis, so that's perfect. It was about $3,400 for the person to come in and figure out what it is. You know, do we do single fuel by fuel, what size, what all does it need to power, at what level? So as soon as we have that, then we can also work on the next, the funding of the actual generator itself.
I think there's, well, there's some other portable generators at the water facility?
Correct, yes.
And well 11, is that a permanent fixed structure, or is that mobile?
No, it's, so the ones I listed are substantial, so the bigger ones. Though, I believe water has two portable generators that they could haul to different well sites.
And one reason why I bring that up, because, you know, we got away this time with not needing the community center yet. So I mean, it's a good thing that we didn't have whatever else, you know. You only really know what you need when emergencies do come. And I don't know if there's any other things that have some other holes in it. I mean, do you feel that we're covering everything else all right, or?
Yeah, with the utilities, last year, we looked into it, especially because of PSPS. We made sure we tested them. We had plenty of fuel. The fuel is being treated properly. And also, we did procure a contract with the local fuel supplier, which gets us priority access to fuel in emergency.
And so one of my questions with the Tap TV radio, I mean, I've been kind of the advocate saying, hey, we need something there. I remember it wasn't long ago that we were in a situation, maybe three or four years ago, where it'd been nice to have the powers out in July, and four hours of runtime. Is there ability to have a, or I'd get more than that, I'm sorry, at 10 hours?
Okay.
So it's 10 hours of runtime, is, do you think that's sufficient?
Which I beg, it's a smaller generator, too. It's like a suitcase generator.
Yeah, it's a portable, small, yeah.
So you could go up and fuel up?
Yeah, it's not one of the big guys.
Okay. All right, well.
Utilities, we got it covered.
Except for the DeWes, right?
Any more questions? Councilmember Vega.
Thank you, Teakin, for that information. With the Anderson Rec Center, it seems like with Tap TV, are they, or as maybe Mr. Troop would know, are they part of our emergency response or communication through the city as a local channel? Also, because I'm going toward, if there's any money available based on the emergency that we have, so are we using that TV station to communicate locally if something was to happen, or power outages, or anything like that in parts?
No, we wouldn't. In fact, we're doing PSA's over it right now, public service announcements. So there is that opportunity. We can actually look into that and see if there's any funding out there.
Just looking to see if there's any funding. Also, the, as we're there, with the individual radio stations or TV stations due to our local channel, is Tap TV functional right now besides the council meetings? Are they able to have their individual shows? You know, and it is a communication venue here for the city, so just looking to see if there's any money out there for that.
Yeah, we can, we can look. We get the PEG funding, so that's what sort of pays for the process and the production right now. I don't know if, I know in the past, they had done some, they had the green screens, they could do more. I don't know. I'll have to follow up to see if there's any actual.
Sometimes it might just be a way of boxing it in and renaming it, you know, so it fits within the pandemic or COVID-19, if there's emergency funds, so it was a question. So thank you, Teakin, I appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Seeing no more questions, thank you for the presentation and the update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll now move on to oral communications regarding any city matter. Your phone number to call in is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your volume on your PC, TV, or radio when you call in. And the number again is 805-875-8201. We will begin oral communications with those present in the room. You have three minutes maximum. Please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, council. John Lynn Lompoke resident, excuse me for not getting to change before I came, but I was working kind of late. So there's a great deal of discussion in the news about COVID-19. And I thought it would be interesting to bring some of those facts together, because people are scared and other information isn't getting out. So I think the first thing we all need to understand is that this disease doesn't show symptoms in between 50 and 80 people for each one that does have a symptom. And that's based on some studies at both USC and Stanford. What does that mean? If those numbers hold true across the country, and obviously they're small studies, that would mean somewhere between 71 and 113 million people have had the virus. And I happen to know two folks who work in the medical industry, and their whole families had it back in February when it first came around. So there's a lot of discussion about death, and, you know, clearly I'm a little older. It's pretty important to me. I wasn't planning on checking out this week. Deaths nationwide are about 85,000. Of those, 28,000 are in senior care facilities, principally in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and I think Illinois. Other states, including California, have fared a lot better. Florida seems to have done about the best, because they moved to provide protective gear. So what's the risk? Well, in Italy, 99% of the people had one or more pre-existing conditions, about 60% had three. In the United States, it seems to be about 90%. 60 to 70% of those people, it's hypertension, high blood pressure, arterial fibrillation is 25%, cancer treatment is 20, heart disease is 33, diabetes is 25, and kidney disease is 18. So you should look at, if you have pre-existing conditions, you should look at those and determine what that, what the impact is on you. Secondly, there's a lot of discussion about contact tracing. That really has turned into a giant waste of time, because if you only know about one in 50 to 80 people, that doesn't help you too much. And finally, the thing I'd like to talk about are masks. There's a very good study out by the Defense Department Combat Lab, and I'm just going to summarize it quickly, since my time is running out. A scarf is worth about 10%. A three-ply microfiber cleaning cloth is worth about 60% protection, as is a surgical mask. An N95 is worth 90%. And currently, there is no research on how many people catch it through their eyes. But you will note that in hospitals, everyone wears a face shield, and that's why distancing is important. If anyone would like a copy, send me an email, and I'll enclose it to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is David Hutzbath, and I am a Lompoke resident. Good evening, members of the city council, and Mayor Janelle Osborne. I come before you this evening with a plea for common sense adherence to the Bill of Rights and the Constitution of the United States of America, which was authored by founding fathers for the express purpose of preventing such events as we find ourselves in today. Our constitution focuses on unalienable rights, both as God-given and expressed. We should all, we should, I allow, why should I allow my rights to be suppressed by officials, especially without legal standing? As of May 18th, the emergency order issued by the governor is no longer in effect. Per the Constitution of the State of California, an emergency order is only effective for 60 days. It should be noted that the head of Health and Human Services, Mark Gailey, through the department attorney, Michael Palamino, so, murdered that name, has publicly stated, and you will notice his statement on an attachment that I have provided. The complaint I bring before you is now, now is, where the citizens of Lompoc have been, continue, have been and continue to be subject to illegal and unconstitutional mandates, which do violate the citizens of Lompoc's God-given constitutional rights to socialization, freedom to gather peacefully, commerce, enter into trade and business, education for old and young, employment, attend religious services in a manner outlined by our First Amendment rights and biblical directive, avoid unconstitutional regulations that rob people of valuable personal time and comfort. For the sake of time, I will stop at these few important examples. The defunct order of the Health Department of Santa Barbara County demanding strict stay-at-home adherence are nothing more than a socialistic power grab, which is bankrupting communities and businesses. Lompoc being one of those communities, it is noteworthy to mention that there are community leaders, for example, the city of Atwood, their leaders are willing to stand up and say, no, let's determine what is best for our city. Lompoc would do well to follow their example. If there are residents of this city who are fearful of the flu infection or contraction, then they should be allowed to stay home, stay quarantined, telecommute, teach your children, just as before. But as for the rest of the residents, myself included, it is my life. You must allow us to control our own self-determination and open businesses, put employees back to work, and allow customers to frequent shops and restaurants as they wish. This does not mean slashing restaurant seating half or three-quarters and accommodating social distancing, a requirement that would most likely cause slow death to small restaurants and business owners. Business owners operate, operators do not have the protections afforded to residential dwellers and rental properties. If they don't make enough pay overhead, to pay overhead because of social distancing dictates, they are out of business, and the city is out of the potential tax payments. That's a lost, lost proposition for everyone. I would hope that the council agrees that the economy of Lompoc is not interested in being labeled an acceptable casualty of the flu, and reopen the city without draconian restrictions of an illegal Santa Barbara County Health Department edict. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your volume on your PC, TV, and radio. City clerk, did we have any written communications? Oh, no, I was just repeating it while I was waiting for somebody to come to the podium. There was nobody approaching, so I used the time to announce the number one more time, so.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I would kind of like to piggyback on what the gentleman just said before me. I believe it's time to start to plan to reopen this community. I believe that it's time to lift the emergency order and have a new emergency order, which is to save our businesses and to save this community from economic peril. I believe that as individuals, we each have our individual right to decide what we do or we do not do. For those individuals that are compromised, I believe it is their right to stay at home. It is their right to take extra precautions. We, as a community, have some right to also help, and that if we are a business, we should adhere to appropriate standards if we do open, and allow people to come in and patronize the businesses in a safe form. But I do not believe that it's in the best interest of this community to continue any longer in this state. If you're going to continue in this state, then you need to also plan on what's going to happen to the city. You don't need to look any further than some of the people in this room and understand that if we don't start to get the revenue generated once again, some of these people will no longer be here in a very short while. We cannot continue at this pace. It is not realistic. It's not economically feasible to continue and ignore the fact that majority of the income stream has disappeared and will not be here unless we resume to some type of normalcy, or at least attempt to regain some type of normalcy. So I'm here to plead with you to consider everyone and help to generate a plan that takes in consideration both those people that need to be protected and the people that need to be protected from the economic losses that they're suffering from this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did receive one oral communications via email. It was delivered to the council, put on the website, and has been provided to the public.
Thank you. This is my first time, so excuse me.
This is my first time, so excuse me. Good evening, all members and public of the community. I'm not sure if I'm at the right place. I believe I am. This is, just to bring up that I am having some issues with a lot of people of the community. And when I'm talking a lot of people of the community, it's from the Commissioner, Commissioner Foley, to Ms. Christina Brooks, to the DA, Mr. Chris Clement, to my son's advocate, Sabrina Ross, to the Leo Lay Foundation, to the Lompoc Police Department, to the CWS, to the Lions Club member that was my advocate and the mentor of mine, and two social, social service workers that are basically committing fraud and, and have taken my children away for no reason. So Commissioner Foley takes my kids away because he said I had a pending eviction and a pending criminal charge that I never had. And now my kids have been taken away from me and being deprived of their older brothers. And their, their older brothers are very successful members of the community. They're the two Santa Maria boxers, the Valderas brothers, Jose and Carlos Valderas, those are my kids, and my son Hector Correo, that was a former police explorer member and a Marine right now, and he was a victim of all this. And I'm getting no help from the Lompoc Police Department. Basically, they are threatening me to arrest me every time I go to the school to ask for help or to find out any information about my daughter. I can't even go to the school. They called the police to come and arrest me. They evicted me out of my apartment, two apartments illegally by the sheriffs of, of Santa Barbara. I have recordings, videos of everything that I just mentioned right now, and paperwork, documents, pictures, witnesses, and all of anything that I just mentioned. And I just need some help addressing this because it's really affecting my children right now. They're only seven, and my daughter's nine. So that's why I came up here. I don't know if I did everything, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you for that. Legal services would be your best avenue, and we'll make sure you get those contacts. The oral communications, any on the phone? Eight oh five eight seven five eight two zero one. Any further comments in the room? Seeing none, let's close oral communications and bring it back to the council agenda. The first item for discussion is the regulation of syringe exchange programs, and that would be our city attorney, Jeff Malave, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're here because the City Council requested this item to discuss potential regulations on needle exchange programs in the city. So this report presents information about what needle exchange programs are, and the ones that are currently operating in Lompoc or the one that's currently operating in Lompoc. And I'm going to talk about some potential options for regulating these uses tonight. So the official name is a syringe exchange program, and it is a program that offers sterile syringes to injection drug users free of charge. And the purpose is to prevent the spread of diseases that can result from using contaminated syringes or needles, such as HIV, hepatitis C, and other bloodborne pathogens. These uses do not only hand out and exchange sterile syringes, but they also, they collect used syringes, and they act as points of access for health education and healthcare services for people who inject drugs. They also offer HIV and hepatitis C testing, overdose prevention training, referrals to drug treatment services, housing, and mental health services. They can also provide first aid and basic supplies, such as clean socks and bottled water, to their clients who are homeless. There are thirty-nine states plus Washington DC that have laws that allow these type of syringe exchange programs. And according to twenty-eighteen numbers, there were more than forty of these operators that were operating in the state of California. Here in Lompoc, we have a syringe exchange program that operates out of a health utility vehicle. It's essentially a van. The name of the organization is the Pacific Pride Foundation, and they are authorized by the County of Santa Barbara to operate within the county. They park on Tuesday afternoons or evenings from four-thirty PM to six PM near the corner of Oak and G Street. They have currently temporarily suspended their operations because of COVID-19, but they plan to start up again in June. In addition to their mobile exchange program that operates out of a vehicle in Lompoc, they also have permanent fixed locations in both, in both Santa Barbara and Santa Maria. They are a one-to-one exchange program, meaning that they will, according to their procedures and rules, they will not give out a clean needle unless someone is exchanging a used needle for that clean needle. They also have personal sharps boxes that they will hand out to their clients that are receptacles for storing and transporting used needles, and they provide them for free upon request. So like I said, the Pacific Pride Foundation program that is, that operates in Lompoc is authorized by the County of Santa Barbara. And every two years, the county health officer is required to present a report on the status of that program to the Board of Supervisors. The last one occurred in October of 2019. That report covered the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen years of operation. The next one's going to be in October of 2021. And that provides an opportunity for the public and for other public agencies in the county to give input and comment to the county on the program. Some statistics here, according to the last report that was created by the Pacific Pride program and submitted to the county, in twenty-seventeen, in the, in the two-year span, twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, the Pacific Pride SEP at all three locations, Santa Maria, Lompoc, and Santa Barbara, distributed a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight syringes and collected a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one syringes for a net reduction in the county, and this is countywide, four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-three syringes. And the reason is because some people just go up and they turn in syringes without asking for a clean syringe back. So they're claiming that their operation in the county is actually reducing the number of needles that are, that are litter waste around our county. The report that they submitted does not include specific information for Lompoc. It only includes that countywide number of, the number of needles reduced. Staff is not aware of any official data from any official study or source that shows that the operation of these uses in the county increases the amount of syringe, of syringe There are a number of academic studies that in fact show that they do not, these types of uses do not appear to lead to increased drug use, increased neighborhood crime, or increased syringe litter in the communities where these programs operate. In addition to the Pacific Pride Syringe Exchange Program in Lompoc, residents of Lompoc or any residents can also turn in used needles at the Santa Barbara County Public Health Clinic Laboratory, which is at three oh one North R Street. This is not a place where you can receive clean needles, as far as I know, but it is all, it is a place where you can dispose of used needles. Citizens of the city can also, if they find litter waste around town, they can also report that to the city by calling City Hall or submitting a citizen complaint form through the city's website. So the way that these programs are operated at the state level essentially is they just need to be authorized by either the city, the county, or the state. And here in Santa Barbara County, like I said, county has authorized the Pacific Pride program to operate throughout the county. That includes the unincorporated, unincorporated areas and the incorporated cities. Because state law does authorize these uses, any time that a county has authorized them, we don't believe that it is legal to fully ban these uses from operating in the city, but the city does have the authority to regulate the uses. So the council may have ideas about how to regulate these uses tonight, but just as listed in the staff report are a few ideas. And one could be to require that they get a permit from the city so that we know how many are operating, and they, as conditions of obtaining that permit, they'd be required to provide the city their proof that they have been authorized by the county or the state. And we could also require certain conditions on that permit. One example is we could require the operator to be a one-for-one exchange. So the one that we have operating in Lompoc right now happens to be a one-for-one exchange, but that's not a requirement of state law. Under state law, one of these programs could be authorized to just hand out clean needles and not take any back in in exchange. So we could require they be a one-for-one exchange. We could also require that the operators in Lompoc provide monthly counts to the city so that we know how many needles they have given out and how many needles they have received. This will give us information about whether the operators are causing an increase in needle litter in the city. It'll also give us information to determine whether they're complying with their one-for-one exchange requirement. The other thing we could do is require, put restrictions on where the uses can operate. So we have that, for example, for our cannabis uses in town, we have six-hundred-foot buffer zones around certain sensitive sites in town, like schools and youth facilities. We could implement buffer radius zones for these syringe exchange programs if the council wanted to do that. There are other ideas lifted, listed in the staff report. One is because although the county has these public hearings in Santa Barbara to let the community and the cities give input on the program, on, on these syringe exchange programs in the county, as far as staff is aware, we have never been, the city has never been specifically provided notice of any of the county's hearings on these uses. So we could require the syringe exchange program to give the city specific notice when those county hearings are going to be. And then any other ideas for regulation that the council may consider tonight or none at all? Another, one of the proposed recommendations is to do nothing tonight. There's other ideas other than regulating the syringe exchange programs to mitigate syringe litter in town. One could be to work with the county to install kiosks around the city in places where if members of the public want to collect syringes, they, they're, they would be receptacles that they could place the used syringes in. We could work with the county and private property owners to place those kiosks, or we could place them on public property in the city if we wanted to start that program in the city. Or of course, we could always send communications comment letters to the county because the county is the current only regulatory body for these uses, with any comments the City Council or the public may want to send to the county. So tonight is, I don't have a prepared ordinance tonight. Tonight is just to get council direction on whether you would like me to bring back a proposed ordinance and to talk with the council and get direction tonight about what types of regulations you might want to place, if any, on these uses in the city. So that completes the staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, four questions, or three or four questions here. Why would these facilities not be regulated within our city by the county? You know, why did they not go through that process and, and allow us to make the ordinance in the beginning instead of just sending a van in there without going through their processes, which is nonprofits in the county that could have facilitated the same needle exchange handout? Or is this a private entity that's actually been approved by the county? I believe that might be what you're telling me.
I think this is the Pacific Pride Foundation, I believe, is a private nonprofit organization. And state law says that if they want to operate, they either need to get approval from the city, the county, or the state. And I suppose it was their choice to go to the, the county of Santa Barbara and apply for the authorization from the county, which the county gave.
Again, you know, it looks like they've chosen a possible higher crime neighborhood, low-lit, near a church, which I would say, just like you stated about the cannabis ordinance, which cannabis wouldn't be able to operate in those same areas. And it seems like a health facility should be involved here or could be involved to say, "Hey, we only want it near a health facility." The handout with possible camera intervention, which states that in case something went amiss, or it seems like a little bit more surveillance would be required instead of picking a dark street next to a church, next to a high-impact area or high-density area with families. It seems like we could do a little bit better. And again, why, since the County of Santa Barbara approved it, the city hasn't approved it, so when we permit this, we're actually allowing it with conditions. And why do we have to allow it at all? And we could send it out to a county facility. Since the county hasn't been so forthright with us, it seems that we have control of our own city. So is that kind of what we're doing? We're, we're building the parameters for which we will allow it? Or do we, you're saying it's not likely that we can ban them? But can we not assign it to, say, a CHC, Lompoc Hospital, and say, "You can only do it right there in their parking lot"?
You're right. I, like I said, we, I don't think that we can completely ban them from operating in the city because they've been authorized by the county, and I think that prevents us from banning them. But we can impose conditions or regulations, like you're saying, on their, what rules they have to follow to operate in the city. That's what we're talking about tonight.
Right.
And one idea is the buffer zones, like we have for cannabis. You're proposing another idea now that is a, like a limited area zone that they must operate in around certain health facilities in town. And that's something that we can, we can look at.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent for us to control the areas that the handout is happening instead of allowing them to choose. And I think health organizations, that's what this is. This is about safety, health, cleanliness. Instead of having needle drops everywhere in the city, it seems like if we control it, at least we know where they're at. Instead of someone going by and posting a picture of the vans here and putting it on Facebook, it seems like we don't have any control right now, which we don't. So I think those are a couple of ideas maybe we could look into. I think the health organizations or the rehab places, or I, I think they might have some input also because they may have a little more control than we do. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
I had a couple of pictures. I don't know if we can put them up. I wanted to see if you could comment on them. There's one that was on the forums there. Syringe was found in the playground equipment on Ryan Park. I think it'd be safe to say that you agree that's probably a, a safety hazard for the youth playing up there?
I think probably yes. I think probably yes.
Okay. Maybe another picture. Here's a pizza box I had stumbled across that had the tourniquet in and a pile of syringes and, you know, I mean, sometimes kids are adventurous and potentially hear something rattling a box, might open it up, but I think there was 52 in that box. Again, it's probably, maybe runs wrong line of a biohazard, maybe? Maybe? I guess a yes. Okay. Maybe one more picture. So River Pacific Pride is getting needles turned in. I mean, there's a glory hole here. This was River Park property as well. Again, I think it's, you know, especially the fires we've had down there and our fire, people having to go down in this type of environment, dark situation, I think that's a, I mean, I know it's kind of redundant and asking, but I think you would agree as well that it's a significant risk factor to members of the community and everybody else.
I think unused needles littered around town, I mean, sorry, used needles or even unused needles littered around town would qualify as a health and safety hazard.
And I probably have, for people who had sent me maybe 100 different shots, different capacities, I've been for multiple years trying to get momentum getting this forward. And I'm glad we have the timing right now. I've been told in the past by, that people are getting, the syringes are entitled to clean syringes. And I, you know, I know they have their program. I'm not going to argue with it. It's the state law. But I think as well that if this is the case, then who's going to clean these syringes before somebody has to pick them up? I mean, I know we spent quite a few dollars cleaning up the riverbed and there were tens of thousands of syringes on the riverbed. I dealt with the city attorney, we were looking, or city manager, potentially doing a, like a CRV, California Redemption Value on these so we can get them off, off the street. And, I mean, it's quite obvious that we need to do something. I appreciate you putting this together and hopefully we can get some momentum going here to get a regulation that we can do better, we can do much better. And I know of two city employees who've come to me since discussing this, who've been stuck with needles on their job. And I think that's a significant liability. I've heard of a third one, but the other two were definitely contacts that they gave me. One was out of a bag, picking up a waist bag out of a bin and it stuck through the bag and got him in the leg. And the other one was in the crotch of a tree. So there's, they're out there and people are getting bit with these things. And when you get stuck with one, I know somebody specifically who just happened to pick up a, like they thought it was a makeup bag they picked up off the ground and they thought somebody had left it there, dropped out of their car, and they got stuck with a needle through the side of that little bag. And let me tell you, for the next year, it's scary because you're doing testing and you're not sure what's going to happen. So I appreciate you putting a lot of good options together and make comments on my slides.
Councilmember Vega.
One more point, Jeff. You know, as I mentioned, the rehab facilities, if we could find out if the county has authorized them to provide inventory to some of these places, and that's why they're here, to provide inventory. Because if we had an ordinance outside or within the city limits, the one-for-one, unless it's in a county facility, wouldn't allow for them to provide inventory or boxes of needles in, in the rehab programs. Or maybe we just need to know that they're being provided and they're also coming into the city. So maybe they're, it's a one-trip, provide inventory for all. It'd be nice because if we're finding out that we have rehabs that are receiving inventory, maybe they can help us facilitate the needle exchange by providing a location instead of allowing them to go anywhere in town, similar to a food truck.
Okay, I can look into that.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Malave before we open this for public comment? Seeing none, thank you. The phone number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your volume on your PC, TV, or radio. And the number again is 805-875-8201. We'll start with in-room public comment.
Nicholas Gonzalez, Lompoc resident. The needle distribution in the low-income, underrepresented neighborhoods, in my opinion, is a textbook example of social injustice. These poor, underrepresented neighborhoods have no say in what is being dumped into their backyard. As I stand here before you today, I rest assured with certainty that not one of your neighbors would allow you to authorize that truck to come into your neighborhood and park in front of your house and do what they're doing in these underrepresented neighborhoods. As much as I respect Mr. Malawi, I must disagree with him wholeheartedly because I have found these needles in washrooms, in playgrounds, in laundry rooms, in alcoves, garages, parking structures, storage closets, rooftops, community hallways, garbage enclosures, public restrooms, church grounds. Everywhere there is a proliferation of hypodermic needles. Just a few days ago, I observed, as always, as you can in that area where they distribute, a man openly shooting up heroin in the public. I have a video, but I didn't want to expose somebody's face, but right there in front. I have walked in doing prayer walks with some church groups and found people who have broken in to vacant apartments, passed out looking like they're dead with needle paraphernalia right around them and all the equipment. We need to do something. But again, this is a social injustice issue. Vandenberg Village was going to have a methadone clinic come in, and the board of supervisors had the planning commission review this, and guess what? The people objected to it being done in their neighborhood and the county didn't approve it. So I don't agree that you can, I believe that the same precepts of law that apply to denying a methadone clinic should apply to denying a needle distribution van. It's a noble idea. I agree that we should try to save people, but at what point do we save people at the risk of other people? Is your life better than mine? Is your life better than mine? My children's life? I've seen kids kicking these things, walking down the street because they don't know what they are. It's not an exchange. I've taken the time and I've watched and I've observed and I've seen people go up there empty-handed, and I've seen them receive a big glob like this and walk off. And they don't get any further than the apartments, the grocery store, the buildings around there, and they're right here. Right there in the open. In fact, I was so upset one day, it took everything I had, because I saw the bus pull up, park, children walk while the other line was waiting for the needles. It's time to do something, and unless you're going to park it in front of your house, then you better not allow it in ours.
Brendan Bridge, resident. I would like to also urge that we go to the full extent to stopping, discourage, limiting any of these programs because it perpetuates this. And rich or poor, we have places that they can get needles. They're Walgreens, they're CVS, they're the hospital. And to the extent that this city goes to put a mandate on a food truck but allows a needle exchange program to run around is ridiculous. It is wholeheartedly disingenuous to your community and to your residents that you allow this. And the fact that we're probably in a couple of minutes going to let it go without a simple motion that says, do anything and everything that allows you to put a law in place to stop them from being in our community, that's what's going to take place. And it's not that there's a needle in our park or a needle in the street, it's the fact that there's actually people doing drugs on our city property. So the next step is a lawsuit. And we both know there's a point in line where we draw the line and we go, a person's worth this much, pay out the family. And it's going to continue. And I watch it every day for my business in the open transit center that you guys have fenced off, and they camp up and they do drugs and they inject themselves with these needles. So I agree, move it in front of your house, move it in front of your business, move it in front of your store, but don't bring it into our community and go, hey, let's give out some more needles because it's all good and dandy.
Hi, I'm Pastor Wiley Charles, longtime resident of Lompoc. And we do the prayer walks and we have noticed needles. In fact, there've been people who lived in Arbor Square who actually cleaned out the play center for the children because there were needles, there were constantly needles there. So it is a problem. It's not a situation where everybody's turning in a needle and getting a needle. That's not happening. They're being given away. And one thing that I might suggest positively is that you can't find a soda bottle around because there's a redemption value on them. You know, maybe we can isolate the location of where needles are turned in and also make some muneration for people turning them in. Then that will motivate people who are using them to bring the needles in.
Good evening, councilmembers. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. So I want to talk both sides of this because when I was mayor, we, we looked into this and talked about it, and you've gotten much further. And thank you to our new city attorney because our old city attorney wouldn't get involved and take any action. So three times I went down there and sat for an hour and a half or so up the block from them, watching what went on at their needle exchange. And it's not a needle exchange. I mean, I'm sure they pick up needles somewhere else in the county, but they don't get them from everybody that comes up here. So if, if their requirement is an exchange, that is in fact not happening. I'm a witness to that. Arbor Square has new owners. They've hired a security firm and they're trying to clean up their place, but it's pretty difficult when you have a magnet that brings people in next door. Once upon a time, if I recall correctly, and one of you may, may remember also, this needle exchange was housed next door in the county office building in one of the, I don't know, health department offices, but for some reason it evolved out onto the street. And I think they felt that people were intimidated by coming in there because it was an official Perhaps the solution here is to require the county to operate this exchange on county property. They have a number of county buildings in the city of Lompoc, and they can most certainly park it in their yard and then they can be in charge of it. I believe we should have a permit. You may be surprised to hear me say it should be a free permit to these people because I appreciate what they're doing, I just don't appreciate the result. So I believe that you on the council should ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance that requires a permit. And if I were in charge of that, it would require them to put their needle exchange program on county property because it is a county program. It is not a program of the city of Lompoc. I think offering a bounty on needles might not be a half-bad idea. We don't have a great deal of money, but a nickel apiece might get an awful lot of needles turned in, and maybe Pacific Pride would like to handle that and help with the solution rather than the problem. It is clear to me that the needle problem has gotten much worse over the last five or six years compared to in the past. And the needle exchange program has been here longer than that, so all of the blame can't be laid on them. But I agree, it's not in the right place. It's near a school, it's near a bus stop, and I've seen people shooting up after they got their needles. Thank you.
Once again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And you should mute your volume on your PC, TV, and radio. City clerk, did we receive any written notifications? Seeing no additional commenters, calls, or written communications, we'll close public comment on this issue and bring it back to city council for discussion. Councilmember Mosby.
So to the city attorney, we couldn't stop it from being on county property, is that correct?
Sorry, could or couldn't?
Could, we could not.
We could not stop it from being on county property?
If they put it on county, so...
Our zoning doesn't apply to county-owned property.
Okay. So do you think that we could require a one-to-one? So if it was on county property, could we still require a one-for-one, even if it was on county property? If it was on county property, restricted what we could do?
I think if it is on county property, a one-to-one rule is not a zoning rule. So I think, I think we could enforce that even on county property. It's zoning rules, so the location of it that we can't enforce.
Can we do monthly counts? Make them, require monthly counts?
Yes.
Okay. So another idea I had, because they say that they, they're doing it, maybe they are doing a good job and they're getting somebody else's needles, but can we require them to ID their product? So if they're passing out, we would know, like those photos I had up here, we would know where those came from, at least if they were coming from the free exchange.
So you're talking about a label, like a label?
Yes.
On every syringe that states that it's coming from whatever the name of the operator is?
Yeah, they could laser etch it or whatever it might be to get it done.
That's certainly something that is within the city's general regulatory authority for various types of business uses. There may be some challenges with this type of use because these needles come in, in plastic wrapping that's sealed so that they can be sterile. So there may be some cost in getting the engraving or the etching that you're talking about done at the manufacturing stage rather than just placing a sticker, you know, the operator just placing a sticker on it. But that's something that we could look into if we're drafting the ordinance and reach out to Pacific Pride, see what comments they have about that and just see if it's realistic.
And it's kind of a licensing, we license our dogs and we license our cars. We kind of know where they're coming from and this can maybe help us solve some problems. And I think as well as if somebody's getting stuck with something, one of these needles, you might give them an avenue of where to go. And I'm thinking at this time, you know, the other stores that are selling them, you know, we'll see how this goes, but maybe we come back and the other stores that are, you know, maybe they're the other ones that are causing or creating a problem, maybe they're being shoplifted like much of the spray paint out of these, you know, where the graffiti's coming from. But it'd be nice to be able to get a little track and trace going on here so we can kind of put out the mess, you know, I don't know. I didn't get to count how many needles were in that one photo, but I would say there's a couple hundred of them. And I know one of the other items that was down in the riverbed that was happening was somebody was taking little twist ties and tying these syringes to the sticks, they called them stickers, so that people were walking around there and were poking themselves as they're going through the bushes. So, you know, little booby traps that was going on. You know, I think, again, we can maybe try to find a little bit more what's going on. So those are kind of my suggestions. I think if we put it on the county property, we can't stop them from doing it on the county property, but let it, let them figure out. We couldn't put something if a county property was across from a daycare, we couldn't stop that, could we?
No, we couldn't stop that. But I also don't want to suggest that we can require these to be on county property. I think we can place restrictions where they can operate, but I don't think we can say that they must be on property that is owned by the county.
So we could use this...
But we may be able to say, like Councilmember Vega suggested, you have to be within a certain distance from the county property. That, that may be acceptable, but I have concerns about saying that they must be on property owned by the county.
So one of the problems I have is, so if they just go somewhere and they're setting up on, on the curbside, they're putting their tables on the sidewalk, they're blocking pedestrian traffic, you know, in this case... You know, in this case, as mentioned, the school bus was stopping, and the kids have to walk around, walk in the dirt around the tables that are lined up with their tourniquets, and they don't have the syringes out there, they have the tourniquets, the syringes are done inside the van. But would, do we allow that already to happen on sidewalks? We allow vending, whether it's free or not, to be stayed up on tables, you know, it's more of a...
That's a good question. We have a sidewalk vending ordinance. I would have to look to see if it specifically applies to this. I think it may only be for selling of goods, where you can get, where you're qualified to do that on a sidewalk. Distributing may not be allowed on a sidewalk unless it's, you know, First Amendment-type flyer-ing material.
And it's supposed to be mobile, and you had to be so far from a driveway, there was a whole lot of rules. And I know if it was a girl selling lemonade, she'd have to have a permit, I'm sure, so, you know, in this case, maybe they already been pushing the rules.
But if they're regularly setting up tables, and not just distributing out of the vehicle, and the tables are on the public right-of-way sidewalk, that's good to know. So that's something I can consider if you wanted me to draft an ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to be inside their vehicle, I guess. We wouldn't allow them to set up operation and business in the public right-of-way like that, I wouldn't think. But you would say more of a recommendation within 100 foot of a county property, is that what you're saying? And treat it like the cannabis 600 foot away from a sensitive receptor? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the restrictions are up to you.
I'm trying to see what's doable.
We can have, we can have buffer zones around sensitive uses. I will look into, and I believe we could have, a requirement that they must operate within a certain distance from a medical center, or rehabilitation center, health That's something I can look into. 100 feet is, is, I can come back with recommendations for you on legalities of some of these.
The other one, real quick, Mayor, if I may, we can look in, like the city attorney said, we can look in to see whether these companies that produce the needles can print something on there. The other one, I forgot, I think the city attorney said it was 240-some thousand needles were returned, somewhere around there.
Yeah, 270,000.
Okay, so you're looking a total of maybe like $15,000. I can also try, I'll say try, reach out to the county to see if, from a public health standpoint, if there's a way that they could find in their public health budget to find, say, $15,000, that's a nickel apiece, that people could go to the different county offices here, you know, the health offices, and then have them be the ones to do the CRV value too, see if there's a way to do that. After talking with Councilmember Mosby one time, I did reach out to Assemblyman Cunningham and another personal friend who's an assembly person down south. I'd never heard anything back from either one, but maybe we take it on, and I can try and reach out to the county to see from a public health standpoint, when there's 270-some thousand needles that have been turned in, and we know there's more out there, is this something that they would be willing to look at? For 15,000 is really a minimal price, when you think about it. So I can, we can look at that, too.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, you mentioned the zoning laws. The county approves, we create our own zoning laws. And if you could clarify here, can we not put in a zoning restriction saying, we don't allow that type of entity on the city limits?
We cannot ban syringe exchange programs.
Okay. So we can, we're stuck with, they don't need a permit, so they came here without a permit, but we're allowed to permit them. So all we're really doing is making a few bucks, and if it's a free permit, it's really... What are we doing? Okay? We're giving a free permit to something we can't regulate, because we don't regulate. The only thing we can do is restrict. We can say, hey, we can be 100 feet from a county, a county property, or we can say, but you have to be 1,000 feet away from a school, or a church, or an entity, because we do that for smoking lounges, for cannabis, so those are the most extreme restrictions. So I'm looking, I've already kind of given you, and you're going the direction that I've already placed it, but I'm saying, the most extreme restrictions from the school, from the churches, the crime areas should probably be something. I think I'd like to stick mostly to the health organizations, and maybe county property. I really like the health organization part of it, the buy-in with that. I think that's the easiest one that we can justify, to say, hey, we have hospitals, we have the CHC. I think if we restricted it to a couple of certain areas, I think that probably would work, since we can't ban them. So I wanted to just clarify that, since we can't do a zoning ordinance that bans them.
Okay, I understand. I can take these ideas that I've heard so far.
Yeah, thanks.
And bring back something to you all.
The labeling and stuff, the only thing that I question about labeling is that's on the user, and they could go anywhere in town. I don't know that we're going to be able to track and trace. I hate to label Pacific Pride with saying, hey, you handed these out, so I'm not sure what we can do there. But I understand the point he's making, because once it gets into the user's hands, they could go anywhere in town. Again, that question, I just wanted to repeat it one more time. If the rehab facilities are being inventoried by these companies also, find out if any ordinance where we restrict it for one-on-one is going to impact them, and maybe there's a reason that they're here, that they're giving them to another rehab organization, because they're handing them out, which, you know, may be a good thing, health-wise. But anyway, those are my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
To answer your question to my question, you know, even with the CRV, in order to make sure you know what you're doing, you definitely have to have the label on it, otherwise you'd be getting, you know, potentially hundreds of thousands are coming from outside the area. But I do believe it's important to know, and initiate at least the tracing. I mean, we spent, I don't even know, tens of thousands of dollars cleaning out of the riverbed, and I understand there's many, many, many more in there, which, you're asking people, this is part of our recreation, and, you know, people to walk through there are our public safety to go through there. There has to be some level of responsibility, if somebody's passing out something, there needs to be a level of responsibility, if it ends up in the wrong hands, or if it ends up hurting somebody. You know, many other businesses that are selling or giving stuff away have that same level of liability. So I think it's important to be able to see where we go, and maybe down the road, you find out each one of them, whether it's another one of the pharmacies in town is selling them or something. But I think definitely in this case, it's something that we need to follow a little closer.
So I think what I'm hearing is also, we need to figure out a way to install Sharp kiosks, and maybe work with the county and Pacific Pride to be responsible for emptying those Sharp kiosks. So we should look into what kind of funding might exist through public health grants or support, because whether an exchange program exists or not, those needles will still exist and still be a problem. And if we provide more opportunities for individuals to deposit them in appropriate locations, and have a partnership with potentially the same organization that is handing them out, to take responsibility for maintaining those kiosks and emptying them, so that we, as a city, don't take on that additional responsibility of having to have staff trained for them, and that cost and risk with our insurance, then we should look into doing that. Because again, it's one thing to put limits and parameters on those exchange programs, but that won't simply solve the concern about needles ending up in locations that weren't ever going to go to an exchange program. So I'd like for us to work with the county, work with Pacific Pride, work with any of these organizations, to identify locations and install kiosks, and put it on them to manage those kiosks, so that we provide every opportunity to dispose of those needles appropriately. I understand the need to regulate and monitor an exchange program, given the concerns we all have about the program being in the community. Is it possible to prevent it from being a mobile operation, and mandate that it be a brick-and-mortar, rather than a mobile?
Well, any regulation that we impose has, we have to make findings showing that we believe there's a health and safety purpose for that. So if we can articulate the reason why a mobile operation has some health and safety impact in our findings in the ordinance, then that would be legally justifiable. So I can work on findings for that, or I can, we can have, you know, input from the council right now, if you had any ideas.
Well, I think that would eliminate some of the randomness and requirements for additional parameters, if we could say that exchange programs should be in a brick-and-mortar location, rather than mobile, and that would designate it to areas like medical facilities or healthcare centers, so that it was in an appropriate location, and as a result, not be a burden on either low-income communities, or near a church, or near a school, but rather as part of our zoning, saying, we support the concept, we support the organizations doing this, we realize it's an additional cost, but in exchange, this is how we accept it in our community. So I would like to see that as part of our discussion.
Councilmember Starbuck.
It's pretty obvious the program's failed. Why don't we, another angle of attack here is, why don't we go to the county and say, you know, your ordinance, you've made it blanket for the whole county, put us in there, we don't want to participate anywhere except Lompoc in the county. Is that a viable way to go? I mean, just something else. Maybe they'll say, yeah, you guys don't want it, we will support you.
I think that is a good idea. We can do that if the council would like.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I would support Councilman Starbucks moving forward to lobby the county, to see if we can be exempt here. Also, the mayor, on the other end, I do appreciate the permanent status of it, I like that. It's going to be a cost issue, not a health and safety issue. And I think working with the county is one way to put it, but I would put it a little differently. I would say a permanent facility is required in Lompoc, if you want to work with us, because this is our city. Instead of us always turning around and being on the weekend, I think we should have some strength in how we want to build our city, so that, and that is also negotiating, working with, so I do appreciate that comment of having a permanent facility, and through a medical facility would be probably next to no cost for them. If Pacific Pride wants to go in there and hand them out through a brick-and-mortar building, they can park their van in the back, but they have to hand it out through a facility or a window, and be approved here. So I do support that. So thank you for that, Adam.
Any more feedback or suggestions for our city attorney in bringing forward a suggested ordinance?
All right, so we have basically feedback. Do we need a motion to support you bringing back an ordinance, or do you have enough direction and support from enough of us?
I think I have enough direction, and I don't think there's been any disagreement, really. So I'll just take all these ideas, and formulate an ordinance, and bring it back, or bring back a status update.
Thank you for that. All right. Item number three is adoption of Resolution Number 632920, approving appropriation of 2.3 million electrical utility reserves to fund a one-time $150 rebate to each business and residential customer, electric utility customer, due to COVID-19. And we have financial service manager Melinda Wall to make the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we're directed on the May 5th city council meeting to bring back a way to give back to the citizens a one-time rebate of $150. This rebate we would do would be coming from our carbon gas credits, it's a greenhouse gas allowance, that these are monies that we receive through California's cap-and-trade program. These monies were originally given to us to help us get into programs that will offset the cost of trying to stick with California's programs. So in 2014, through Resolution 5889, the city authorized and adopted the programs that they would use, the purposes to, one, do 4 KV to 12 KV electrical conversions, upgrade geothermal facilities, three LED lights, and four go towards renewable power procurements. We have updated our LED lights, we have done the 4 KV to 12 KV conversions for the city. The other items for geothermal and renewable power, those things can still be used from the greenhouse gas credits. But in order to use it for the $150 rebate for all the customers that have electrical accounts, we'll have to amend that resolution, and that's what we're attempting to do through Resolution 632920. And this will appropriate, approve the appropriation of spending the 2.3 million to give a one-time rebate to the customers. Now, there are other NCPA cities that are doing this, there are about five of them that are giving a rebate. Some other cities are giving them one-time percentage reductions in cost of their services. But every, almost every NCPA city that has given out power, they're trying to help the customers, and this time where these customers don't have a choice, what's happening to them. So that is basically a summation of it, and Teekin is here, too, if you have any questions about the greenhouse gas allowance.
Councilmember Mosby.
First of all, Melinda, to you and everybody else involved, I mean, to do it two weeks, get it back for us, kudos to that. Appreciate you guys bringing this back this fast, because it's definitely important to get the money back to the people, to give this credit moving forward. So thank yourself, and whoever else was involved in, I'm sure you had a team.
The electric department helped out quite a bit.
Very good. Thank you, guys. I question for the city attorney on this, because it's been brought up publicly on the forums, an ex-city employee threatening litigation, because this is electrics money, it's not the people's money. So can you help me out, how AB 32, and how we're allowed to do this?
Yes. Like it says in the staff report, the California Code of Regulations, and like you referenced, AB 32, was adopted some number of years ago, states the requirements for how we must use these cap-and-trade greenhouse gas emission credits. It says that we're allowed to use them for investments in energy efficiency and renewable energy. Essentially, there's a lot of details in that. But then it also says that the proceeds may be distributed directly to electric ratepayers in a non-volumetric manner. So essentially, that means that the money can be used to do exactly what you're doing, which is to give a credit or a rebate to anyone who is an electric ratepayer, and it must be in a non-volumetric manner, by the way, meaning that you can't get more credit if you use more electricity. It has, it can't be by the amount you use, it just has to be a flat fee, or a flat credit. That's the top of Page 2 of the staff report, and that does reflect what the regulations say.
So in short, it's completely legal and defensible to do this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Melinda, does this deplete the GHG funds, because we do still have outstanding debts regarding geothermal improvements? There's still additional things like batteries for storage that we're investigating and will need to purchase, so this is an option for that resource? So does this exhaust that fund?
We currently have 3.3 million in there, so... We currently have 3.3 million in there, so we'll deplete 2.3 million of that.
And do we regularly receive payments, or do we only receive payments once we've reported what improvements we've made and get a percentage based on those improvements?
It's a quarterly allowance, and we can choose to draw it down at one time or, or once per quarter.
So this fund was designed for helping assist us with some of the unfunded mandates that came down through state legislation in order to modernize, improve, and move towards renewable energy?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any more questions for staff before we open to public comment? Seeing none, thank you, Melinda. For those wishing to call in, the number's 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your volume on your PC, TV, or radio when you get through. The number again is 805-875-8201. And we will start with in-room public comments.
Nicholas Gonzalez, Lompoc resident. Thank you. Just a moment ago, I was quite emotional about one issue, and so I, I want to give that same kind of emotion. And thank you for doing something for the people. It's greatly appreciated. People could use all the help. Thank you.
Thank you. The number is 805-875-8201.
John Lynn, Lompoc resident. I'm sorry that I can't stand here and speak on behalf of the Utility Commission because I would have liked to have brought this up at our meeting. Unfortunately, it was canceled. But I firmly believe that knowing the other commissioners, they would all be in support of this. I think it's a great solution to helping people who need it. So please pass this. Thank you so much.
We do have a call, okay?
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Hi, my name is Leah Raitman, and I'm actually on the Utility Commission as well. And I'm just sort of disappointed that we hadn't, we haven't had a chance as a commission to review this. $2.3 million is a lot of money to be taken out of the fund. And I am fully cognizant that people in our community need help with their bills right now. But I'm just wondering if this one-off, although probably very much needed rebate will bite us in the butt in the future because we do need battery storage. And, you know, I get the, the distinct feeling that Lompoc's going to be open pretty soon. People are going to be going back to work and making money, and they're going to be able to pay their bills pretty soon. So I just, I'm disappointed that the, the Utility Commission wasn't advised about this. Anyway, so please make this decision wisely if you're voting this evening. I know it's going to make you all look great that you've given the common man some money, but once again, I think it might lack foresight that I know the previous councils in this council sort of lack. So thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Do we have any written comments on the item? City clerk. Okay, thank you. Seeing no additional calls or public comments from in the room, we will close that and bring it back to council. And the rush for the lights seemed to be in constant unison. So I will go with councilmember Mosby.
So rest of the council way back in 2014, I remember when I was sitting out there, when this came forward, councilmember Starbucks said, hey, you know, one of the things can you do, can you give back to the people? And that was, something was allowed to do. So this isn't something that's totally isolated and pigeonholed in some certain program. There's many variables, and one of them is giving it back to the people because, remember, it is their greenhouse gas credits. The people are the ones who bought us into NCPA way back when. So this is their, their money as well. I think getting probably, I didn't get staff a head nod, $700,000, $800,000 a year more in greenhouse gas credits. Been averaging about that much a year. Head nod, yes, from Teakin on there. So the next program that he had available, if you'd looked at the other staff report, this doesn't totally deplete the fund, leaves about $1.1 million in the account, or closer to 1 million, but you should be in good shape here with the carbon credits being sold so we can carry on with the program. They hadn't been spending it the way they had anticipated for whatever the reason. That's why there's 3 point some odd million dollars in his account right now. And what better time than now to give back some of the money that is the people's?
Councilmember Starbuck.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion, but if councilmember Vega has something that he wanted to, you know.
Yeah, I know it's pick and choose. Whoever gets the talk, I get it. But what I want to say is, you know, we're in a unique position to help the ratepayers also. But we wouldn't have this opportunity if we were not the owners of our own utility. And basically, they still do have a reserve. There are people out there that are hurting and need some assistance. So I think it's a good thing. There's four phases in reopening this thing, so it's going to be a while. We're just trying to get to the first part of it. So.
Councilman Starbuck, I don't want to take your motion away from you. So I want you to go ahead and speak next, but thank you for allowing me, and I'll, I'll let it go to you. I just think it's a good thing.
Actually, the next person to speak will be councilmember Cordova because her light on is next, and I will let councilmember Starbuck know when it's his turn to speak. So thank you for that. Councilmember Cordova.
So I, I do feel comfortable with having the reserves still have about $1 million left over. There is, if I'm understanding this correctly, there is opportunity for the fund to continue to grow. And so that's a plus. I'm perfectly okay, and I thank councilmember Starbuck for being persistent on this, and I, I can support giving this back to the community. Is there a cost that we have for the battery backups that we were just discussing earlier today?
All of our, most of our facilities have generators for electric. We're okay with generators. So there's no established cost at this point to go towards.
But we were talking about the Dick Dwee Center, so was that something that was going to be coming out of this fund or no?
I don't think we could use those funds.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that in case anybody. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck, you now have the.
I was just going to make a, a quick comment here. This is not a reserve fund for electric. I mean, I just, real quickly looking, one of the, one of the balances of one of the reserves in electric is 6.6 million. This is a whole separate type of reserve fund, not a battery generator or any of that type of thing. But yeah, I was going to go ahead and make the motion that we accept resolution number 6329.
Thank you.
Let's say second.
Thank you, councilmember Mosby. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional questions or clarifications needed? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0. The next item is adoption of resolution number 6330 (20), authorizing funding for Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Utility Grant Assistance Program and authorizing the city manager to sign any required agreements. And our Community Development Program Manager will make this presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and community. Tonight, I am seeking council's approval to use Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus, CDVGCV, funding for short, for Utility Grant Assistance Program.
Sorry.
Thank you. On April 7th, 2020, the City of Lompoc received notification of a special allocation in the amount of $311,290 in CDVGCV funds, in addition to its fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant CDVG funding. The allocation was authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, in response to the growing effects of the COVID-19 epidemic. The funding was provided to our city to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. Due to the statewide shelter-in-place order issued on March 19th by the Governor of California to slow the spread of the COVID-19, many households and businesses have lost income and are enduring financial hardships. Since the issuance of that shelter-in-place, the city's utility department has experienced high volumes of telephone calls from customers who are unable to pay their utility bills due to rejection in hours of work, furloughs, layoffs, and temporarily closed businesses, resulting in over $500,000 in unpaid utility bills. The Community Development Division, under the CDVG program, has developed a Utility Grant Assistance Program to assist low-income households and owners of small businesses affected by the pandemic, many of which were and/or are newly classified as low-income households. Under HUD's Annual Updated Income Guidelines, a household of four with an income, an annual income of $88,300 is considered low income for our area, and they can qualify for our program. This funding is governed by the United States Department of Housing, Urban Development, and must abide by CDVG processes and regulations with an additional requirement that it is to be used, again, solely to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus epidemic. Some important federal funding criteria is CDVG funds may not replace any city or state-funded functions. CDVGCV funds are restricted for COVID-19 response activities. All funds must be used for activities that benefit low-income persons, and expenditures that are not in compliance with HUD regulations must be paid back from the city's general fund. The CDVGCV budget is as follows. Administration cost is capped at 20% of the total grant for $62,258, and the remainder of the $249,032 is for utility grants. Staff will administer this program. HUD allows for 20% of total grant to be used for administration costs. The cost for the program includes salaries and benefits to carry out the program, training, supplies, advertising, printing, mailing, IT services, translation of documents from English to Spanish, monitoring, and record retention. Please note that any of the funding that is not used toward admin costs will be used toward the utility grants. Program highlights. The program assistance is in the form of a grant to assist eligible applicants with utility bills not to exceed their account balance nor three months of utility bills for periods affected by the coronavirus epidemic. This is a grant, not required to be paid back by recipients. Households or owners of small businesses having five employees or less are required to income-qualify for, for the program and submit evidence of financial hardships due to COVID-19. The program is scheduled to begin in July of this year and will be announced on the city's website. Once the program is launched, the application will be available and include a list of required attachments. A complete application will include a copy of the current City of Lompoc utility bill in the applicant's name, documentation of evidence of direct COVID-19 impact on the household. Some examples may be a letter from their employer showing reduced hours in work, furlough, or a close of the business due to COVID-19, copies of proof of monthly income for entire household, copies of issued photo ID for applicants whose name is on the bill, copy of government-issued document of legal residency for applicants as a requirement of the federal government who issued this funding. Additional documentation for some business owners who may apply would be a copy of page one and two of their most recent filed signed tax return, a copy of most recent employee roster signed as documentation that the business is of five employees or less, including the owner. The application process, applicants must obtain and submit a complete application. Applicants must income-qualify and provide evidence of COVID-19 impact. Grant assistance, again, will not exceed utility accounts' balance nor three months of billing for periods during the pandemic. There will not be a waitlist. Only completed applications will be processed in the order they were received, and eligible applicants will receive a grant credit directly to their utility account until all the program funds are depleted. Ineligible and incomplete applications will be denied in writing. It is the staff's goal to process all applications, applications in order to credit the utility account within 15 days of receiving a complete application. The program is scheduled to launch in July of this year. Applications will be available online on the city's website, on the informational stand outside of City Hall, and by request by way of mail, fax, and email. The program will practice safe distancing by receiving completed applications through the utility dropbox, mail, email, and fax. All program procedures will be listed in detail for the applicant on the application once the program is open. The city's average monthly residential utility bill is $250, consisting of charges of electricity, water, trash collection, refuge, sewer. The average monthly non-residential utility bill can range from like $300 up to $10,000 for locally-owned establishments such as small businesses, stores, car wash, laundry facilities, and restaurants. I'm pleased to say that under this program and the proposed budget, we can assist approximately 1,000 monthly billings for working and non-working families, single persons, and small businesses in our community. It is important for the city and the community to understand that this is not simply a program to assist low-income households with delinquent utility payments. This is a program to assist low-income households and small businesses that are enduring financial hardships during the coronavirus pandemic. This program will not pay for delinquent utility amounts due for periods before or after the pandemic. In closing, again, this program can benefit up to 1,000 households and small business monthly billings, and it complies with the CDVG primary objective to prevent decent, habitable housing and suitable living environments, principally for low-income persons, and in addition to meeting the CDVGCV restrictions for beneficiaries affected by COVID-19. The Community Development Division is recommending this program instead of the rental mortgage assistance program as the program will assist far more in our community. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Vega.
Thanks, Chanel. I appreciate that. This application, is this the required application? Or is this something that was generated by the city?
The city did put it together, but using information that is required. I know there's some information on here because we're asking like the ethnicities and the races, and if they're female head of household. Those questions are required by HUD in order for recipients to receive this funding.
Okay, I see that you, a copy of the most employee roster. What if there's no employee roster? You know what I'm saying? It's kind of like.
Don't need to say.
Just for households? What if, are you an employee if it's just for a household?
Oh, no. The employee roster is just for businesses that will be applying for the program.
Wanted to see because it wasn't clarified here. Somebody here would say, well, what's that? You know what I'm saying, especially some of the Hispanic people that may need it interpreted.
Make sure that's clear.
Yeah, if it, if it was clarified, it'd be a little bit better. If denied, if someone filled it out wrong, they're going to be able to amend it also, right? They're not completely denied off the program. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'll send it in writing, and we'll list the items that were needed or not completed for them to be able to resubmit with the missing information.
So with an army of two, Chanel, how do you guys, how are you guys expecting to process this? How are you going to take, do the intake on applications? Or how are you expecting to? Okay, so that during this phase that we're in.
Well, I have to tell you, our City of Lompoc team has been. Well, I have to tell you, our City of Lampok team has been awesome. They are, we are all going to work together and get this done through various departments, and we also have funding with the budget that we're going to be able to also get more assistance to do this.
So are you bringing in a couple more part-timers, is what I'm saying, to help you with this?
We may have one part-timer.
Because I see that you could give the money back, but you could also utilize it for efficiency, I guess. That's why I'm asking. And, I'm not sure, Jim?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know if you heard. Yeah, we might look at one part-timer to help out.
Gotcha, because I know the departments are a little gun-shy, but when you get 1,000 applicants, or you might get 5,000 applicants, but only 1,000 are going to be approved, is that correct?
We can only, we can help up to three months of billing per household. So one household may only receive one month, another may receive up to three months. It depends on what their balance is and what they're requesting of the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
So truly, your actual limit is the fact that you'll have $249,032 to start with, and once that's exhausted, if you have no money left from the administration costs, then the program is completed. So the guesstimate is potentially servicing about 1,000.
A thousand monthly bills.
It just depends on each applicant, the amount requested, and how long the funds last.
Yes, that is correct, but it's pretty close to 1,000 monthly billings, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, can you read what family of four low-income is here?
Oh, yeah. The family of four in our area is $88,300 would qualify. Is that on?
Check your thing out. What do you say on your, on your staff report? I think it says 95,300?
That is for a family of five. So I will have that corrected. Thank you for catching that. I appreciate that.
The other question I had, maybe the city attorney can help with this too, is, because not all businesses have, you know, potentially five full-time employees. Can it be referenced as a full-time employee equivalent? You know, because you'd hate to see somebody say, well, I have got six part-time employees, I got to get rid of one so I can qualify. Can it be an employee equivalent, so?
Yes, we can do that.
You can do that?
And we'll, we'll make sure we put that in there, too.
Yeah, I think that would open up a few more people, because there's a lot of places that have more part-time employees. We don't want people to get snipped, right?
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
For clarification, so you have to be behind on a particular month or up to three months in order to qualify for the grant?
You do not have to be behind, but we will only pay balances during the pandemic.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So we will not pay if it's already, yeah, we will only pay balances.
Prior to March 2020, if they were behind, you won't go that far back. You'll start at the point that the, okay.
But if, but if a resident or a business owner, for example, people are having to make hard decisions, and sometimes rent and utilities is, is one of the primary or priorities that people make, but sometimes they're left with nothing for potential food or, or other stuff, right? So if somebody paid it, but they came back and applied, and they showed you the proof that they were still in hardship, but they had to thread everything together to possibly make that payment, would they be still approved for that grant to get that money back, or have it credited to their, for future?
We can apply it to their, their next billing.
Okay. Does that make sense?
As long as it's within the pandemic period.
Okay, as long as it's within the pandemic period. Got it. Thank you.
So if they were good, paid their bill, but have all the qualifiers and make the application and qualify, they can receive a credit on a future bill as a result of having made the payment, though difficult?
Yes, and that dollar amount would be just the bill amount.
Councilmember Vega.
Chanelle, I don't see really any guidelines on pandemic here, so it must be a judgment call, whether they state, or you're saying they have to prove it's a pandemic event, okay? Now, how would someone do that if, if, for instance, we have the stay-at-home thing, and people are with their kids home from school? They can't go anywhere.
They can, they can show evidence by, if they, if they chose to take the family leave, they can show evidence with that documentation from their employer, from unemployment, as long as it's something that shows that they were affected, and they can show some type of documentation that they were affected by COVID-19.
So, for instance, if they had children at home, and they could show you that their kids are at home and they couldn't go to work, is that going to be proof enough because the schools are shut down at this time?
Yes, it is.
Okay, there are, and I have to ask this directly.
And they could even, they could even go to Lampok Unified School District's site and print out that the schools are closed and submit that as...
But isn't it common knowledge that the schools are closed? Because we have our emergency leader right here, and didn't he deem us stay-at-home and schools are closed? And you guys are communicating with our health officer through the governor, through the state, so why would somebody have to jump through those hoops?
Because if we are audited in a year, two years, three years from now, and HUD comes, they just pick one or two from the files, and they will just look at that, and they will see all of the documentation there at once, and if that particular documentation's not there, they're going to want to audit everything. So we ask, in order for them to receive this grant, which is free money, that they do make the effort to supply the information to us. It also assists us with...
No, I get it, but I see CBDG.
Yeah, but we would want them to do, but I totally understand what you're saying. It is common knowledge. School is out.
It's a proof that basically, we should be able to help with that when the kids are off of school, because we have our chief health officer, who's been given emergency authority here to, to authorize, and he knows what the rules are in place. We know the schools are closed. Who are you going to get ahold of at the school?
They can go online and just print out something.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't mean to pick on you, but it seems like a frivolous...
I understand what you're saying.
Something that you're going to have to go through to prove it, and I don't like dragging people through the mud, okay? You're saying it's free money, but it's money that's come in, it's coming back to the city, so the city does benefit from that, that grant, because they're also helping assist their utility bill and their payments. So it's not like it's going somewhere else. It's coming back, so I'm just asking if we have another thought process when somebody has a hard time with that, with the school? You're going to have them call the school over and over again, and you have people that are in daycare, there's preschool that are completely closed down, so...
You know, when we had our TBRA program, our tenant rental assistance program, there were many applicants that, we couldn't just send them a letter and tell them, these are the items that you're missing. Our staff is very good at working with clients and being able to tell them, or our customers, this is not only the item that you're missing, but this is the way you can get it, and that is something that we can do, because we know some people might not even have their current bill, and we may have to request it from Treasury, and that is something that we can do. We can have some copies of that form in order to assist them to complete their application.
And I understand you're doing your job to stay compliant, but again, there's only going to be enough funds for about 1,000 households, possibly. So there's going to be a horse race for this, and sometimes people may be right in the beginning, but maybe some hoops that they cannot get over. It sounds like they're going to be out of luck if they can't get ahold of someone to say, hey, it's due to the pandemic, or if the school's just shut down, and we know it's shut down, can we get a generic letter from the superintendent of schools? You know, I mean, I just don't think it should be that hard for them to come up with proof of pandemic when you have minor children.
Our staff can help and assist with that. I understand where you're coming from.
I'm bringing that point up, so we can, the people that are the authority here are the ones that can actually help with that, but to get somebody on staff and expect them to answer the phone, I can tell you, you're going to get a recording. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chanelle, I will make sure you have the contact for Lampok Unified School District's Business Administration Office, who could provide the generic letter that states the Unified School District has been closed, and for the dates that it has been closed. So you have a document that's pre-prepared, so those individuals don't have to chase it down. Lampok Unified School District is still open, the Business Administration is still working, and they are still available, but in agreement with Councilmember Vega, I think they would be happy to provide it. They've provided childcare for essential workers, and they're happy to assist us in any way that is assisting the residents. So I'll make sure you have those contacts tomorrow, that you can reach out and get that document from. For clarification regarding that audit, if they were to audit and found us failing to have properly documented all of the things they require us to document two, three, four years down the road, the second impact is we have to repay those funds, correct?
I'm sure if, if there were...
Enough violations.
Enough of them, we would.
Yeah, so there's always a risk that, depending on where the federal government is at with their budget, how punitive they become with us violating any of their requests. Okay. Are there any more questions for staff before we open for public comment? Seeing none, thank you, and we'll open for public comment. The phone number on this item is 805-875-8201. I know our chief's trying to call in already. I can hear him asking series, so again, the number is 805-875-8201. And if you call in, please mute your TV, PC, or radio. I'll open the room for public comment, in-room public comment. Seeing no one rise, I'll turn to our city clerk and see if there were any written comments. No written comments. I will ask one more time, 805-875-8201. Chief, are you sure you don't want to call in and make sure the phone lines work in?
It's on its ear, boy.
Ah, well, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I moved, we move forward with the adoption of resolution number 6330, parentheses 20, authorize the funding for a community development block grant coronavirus utility grant assistance program. I'm not going to read the rest, okay? So...
You, you moved to support staff's recommendation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay.
All right, all right. Councilmember Mosby.
I'd give you a second if you put along with the, what's your, corrective changes in there on the household size income changes?
Yes, with the corrective changes for the, the income for a family of four and five.
And then, Councilmember Mosby, you'd also mentioned amending it to, say, five full-time equivalent employees or less. Do you want to add that, too?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Is that the only category that was out there? Was it just four and five, or there are other ones?
No, this is on the, for the five. He was asking about the pay scales.
Oh, I will check all of them.
Okay, so are those potential...
So we can amend whatever she finds that's incorrect, as far as the income stats.
Yes, give you a second.
It's been moved, it's been seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Item number five, review comment on draft City of Lampok pedestrian bicycle master plan for May 2020, and that will be presented by our civil engineering associate, Joshua Laird.
I'll just give a brief introduction for Josh here.
Thank you. You didn't look like Josh, Craig.
So Craig Dearling, also with the Engineering Division. Thank you all for taking time this evening to consider the city's pedestrian and bicycle master plan, which we are preparing for adoption soon. The plan will greatly benefit the city in applying for grant funds, but to construct all those projects that are prioritized in it. And schedule-wise, because the grant that we use to prepare the plan needs to be closed during June of this year, we have scheduled the adoption of the plan for the June 2nd meeting, June 2nd council meeting, in order to provide sufficient time to close, but if the council needs more time to comment, or the public needs more time to comment, we can postpone a meeting until June 16th to facilitate that, so let us know. And I'll introduce Josh, who's worked hard over the last year to prepare the plan, to reach out to the public, and to put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this, measuring grant was approved the summer of 2017. It increases our, our chances of receiving grant funding. It scopes and prioritizes pedestrian and bicycle projects remaining in the city, and also those that are prioritized are consistent with the city's general plan. The plan goals were to determine the city's walking and biking needs, to scope and prioritize the improvements that meets those needs, with our primary focus being on safety for the students commuting back and forth to school, either walking or biking. And we did this while ensuring that it met the requirements of the California Transportation Commission's active transportation guidelines, and as well as the State Highway's Code that mandates certain requirements that bicycle transportation plans, which this is also a bicycle transportation needs, while also ensuring that consistency with the general plan, of course, and, and other parallel documents, regulation documents, and studies. In creating the plan, we mapped the city's pedestrian and biking improvements that were existing. We also analyzed the travel mode share to get the numbers on walking and biking, which is also, it's a requirement that the plan must, it's something the plan must include. We analyzed the mode share and also looked into vehicle collisions with pedestrians and bicyclists, and focused on locations that were problem areas. We got involved, we got the local organizations and agencies involved. They're currently reviewing the plan, and, and helping by providing feedback on the We got residents involved as well. We were present and promoted the plan and solicited the survey responses at the Flower Festival last summer, and also two of the Old Town Markets last summer. The second Old Town Market, we actually partnered with Caltrans. While they promoted their District Five ped and bike plan, we're also there promoting our, the city's pedestrian bicycle master plan. The plan recommend, plan recommended projects are all consistent with the city's general plan and include sidewalk uphill projects, crossing improvements, bike paths, lanes, and shared-use bikeways, and also there are a couple other miscellaneous projects that help support biking. So last week, we presented at the Planning Commission on the 13th. Some of the commissioners' comments included considering tourism and prioritization in the prioritization model, where we prioritized all the projects. Also included in the comments were commendations for the plan, both, both in the fact that it promotes safety for our students commuting back and forth, and also just in general. In follow-up to the Planning Commission's comments, we did a run on the prioritization model that included tourism as a factor. The result was that it took away from the benefit of safety for the student commute, and also it moved projects forward that were quite expensive and not very feasible to get grant funding for. get grant funding for. To conclude, the plan makes grant funding more, makes us more eligible for grant funding, and it also helps us, helps the engineering division package those projects and prioritize those projects, so that when we do go out for grant funding, we've already got something to move forward with. So I'd like to take this time to welcome feedback from the public and from the council.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I don't want to rain on the parade, but prior to your employment, I'm going to look in this direction. We spent a lot of time talking about the Robinson Bridge. I meant to try and come by and see somebody. I didn't want to have to do it from the dais, but time didn't allow me. If I recall, a few years ago, we hired a consultant that gave us four, six options on a bike pedestrian to cross the river safely. Suspension bridge, attachment to Robinson Bridge, a separate bridge where the bike path dead-ended at Greco to go to River Park. I mean, we spent thousands of dollars to do this bike pedestrian study, and none of it's included in the master plan, so if we decide that we want to try and do something like we tried years ago, we aren't going to be able to go ahead and do the grant funding, the ATP, none of this. I mean, I think we're missing the boat big on not including the pedestrian bicycle safety on Robinson Bridge in this master plan. Anybody remember these studies? I know that you don't, Ms. Laura. You were...
Go ahead, Craig. Yeah, so that particular project is, for the most part, being accommodated through the Caltrans replacement of the bridge in the shop program. And the reason the separate project wasn't included in this study is because it wasn't within the circulation element of the general plan, and we needed this plan to be consistent with the circulation element. So if we amended the circulation element of the general plan to include a separate facility crossing for beds and bikes, then we could include it in here and maintain consistency.
So that's all it takes, is just a modification in the circulation element to include a pedestrian bridge for bikes and pedestrians?
That was all that prevented it from being in this plan, right?
Well, that's an easy fix. We could, we could make that happen, you know, because once this is approved, do we get to go in and modify it?
Yeah, of course. It's up to the city.
But is it going to go like the consultant's study before, and we're just going to forget it?
Well, yeah, so that basically was a benefit to us in that the consultant's study led to the project being included in the Caltrans shop program, which it wasn't previously. So, so that did facilitate additional funding for the highway bridge replacement, which can accommodate beds and bikes also, as well as advancing the schedule of the project.
But wouldn't, even though it's a Caltrans shot project and all, why wouldn't it be included in our master plan? I'm trying to educate myself also here with this.
Yeah, well, the Caltrans shop project is replacement of the whole Robinson Bridge.
Right.
And the projects here, I suppose we could have included bridge replacement, but we knew that one was already planned.
Because when I review these routes in this, we still have the dead-end route that goes to, I call it the old Greco property. The bike path just dies, that's it. And that intent was to try and turn that and go across the river, or connect it to the Robinson Bridge somehow, and it doesn't show anything in here about that either.
Yeah, so there will be Class 2 paths on Highway 246 already as part of that Robinson Bridge replacement project. And across the bridge, the current Caltrans standard is a Class 1, like we have on the north side of town, crossing the Sinez River on H Street.
Okay, so the intent would be to still let the bike patches dead-end there on Ninth Street, or Ninth or Tenth, wherever it is right in there?
Well, I believe there's, I believe in the circulation element, there is a Class 1 path that comes down the river on the west side to 246, very near the west side of the bridge. So I believe the ultimate connection would be, connect that into the Class 1 that will be included in the bridge replacement.
Councilmember Vega.
Josh and Craig, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I heard that presentation there, and the tourism aspect of it as far as bike paths. You mentioned that it affected safety to add that to the current plan. One of the comments I heard was tourism is so important here for bikes. Now, are bike paths dead-ending, or are they, are they required to go all the way through? So for instance, if we had a plan in our bike path master plan that said we were going to go to the beach, that the bikes would be invited to go to the beach, to Surf Beach or Ocean Park, is that something that's outside of our scope because it's outside the actual urban limit line, or is that, is that something that can be included? I think it would be a great, it would be a great selling point for Lompoc, because out there, there's very minimal traffic, and I think it would be great for people that do come through with bikes, so it's just a question.
Yeah, we, we didn't continue routes beyond what the circulation element includes, which is generally the city limit. So it could be coordinated, like the city's interest in it, could be coordinated with the county, but it wasn't included in this plan because it's outside of the city limit, outside of the circulation elements routes.
Is there something that we could do to have that included besides negotiating with the county, I mean, or, I guess, I don't understand how it connects. You know, the road going to the beach versus Lompoc, I understand the urban limit line, but as far as bike path master plan, which is included as the city of Lompoc, it would be a tourism-type economic boost from, you know, in my, from what I'm thinking. I think we're looking at, are we looking at just safety, or are we looking at tourism? What are we looking for in this, in this master plan? Just to comply with regulations, or what are we doing?
The way that the projects were prioritized in the master plan, and, well, I guess backing up, the, in the grant application, kind of the intent of the plan was to first focus on the safety and convenience, also improvements that facilitate kids walking to school. So that was kind of the first focus of the plan. And after that, basically, how to help the largest portion of the community we can with the improvements that are proposed. So there are a number of scoring criteria in the prioritization model included in Appendix A of the plan, that, and the explanation of those is in Appendix A. And safety, how well the projects meet those safety needs, and volume of users are three of kind of the biggest components of those.
So if we wanted to include, say, the beach, just say for, the bicyclist probably would love that, access to go to Ocean, go toward the beach, bypass, cut through Lompoc, probably go out to the penitentiary. I mean, it is probably a little scary out there, but it would allow them to bypass some of the congestion, you know? So I'm thinking of, as a boost, how do we attract the bicyclist here? So, again, I saw up there where it said tourism could be included, and how would that be included, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, right. That slide was about whether or not to include scoring for a tourism component in the prioritization model that decides which projects are higher priority than others to seek grant funding for first. So we, we tried that, and it moved some projects up on the list that were more tourism-based, and then the side effect was moving others down that were more like neighborhood routes to school type projects. So that was the trade-off.
So are there only like 1 through 10, or how many elements can you guys fit in there? Because you said if you moved it up, others would move down. How do you expand on that, or can you?
They're all still on the list. It's just, it's just the order of their priority on the list, as shown in the appendices of the plan.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to hear some other input from the council members as far as tourism, or if they think that's important, or it's a priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
So seven, eight years ago, I know the plan came back for alternative access across the river, and they paid, I don't know, maybe 300,000 or 400,000 bucks steadying it. And, you know, one of the problems with Lompoc is we go direction, we move forward, and then we leave traction, and all that money's gone, wasted. And, as being the rep on SB CAG, seeing how they cycle on ATP grants, south, north, south, north, we were next in line three years ago for ATP grant, and we didn't file. And they did other projects. It was right after the Rincon project down there, it was 8.3 million dollar bridge just going across the train tracks. And they have several more grants afterwards, they keep doing it down south. In North County, we do almost minimal, no filing for these grants, and this is not something that the elected do, its staff does, and in certain cases here, getting across that river here, it can be multi-jurisdictional that's on there. And understanding waiting for a bridge that might come, might not come. I mean, if you look at the chart, you'll see it says 27, 28, and the gray area goes all the way to like 38, if the money, if Measure A money's available, if shop is a qualifier, if they don't redirect all the shop money down south, which they're very good at doing, and making certain things. South County projects, they leverage their ass, their money. They leverage their monies to get more grants, and they take $100 million, the next thing you know, they have $400 million. In the meantime, we still have a bridge, it's a 1939 bridge that is sitting there, and we're waiting to get pedestrians across there. If we were in South County, we'd probably be on our third bridge getting across the river. You know what I'm saying? I mean, they got one going across the train track over there. We, so my idea to the council, and I know it's not necessarily a question, but we really, I'm questioning, we need to step up and ask for more. And I think what Councilmember Starbuck said, we really need to step up and get some more. We really do. Closed mouth doesn't get fed, and we should have been asking, all right, if we did get our first grant, we could have been on our second grant, attempt at the second grant, or the third grant, or we could be lobbying for it to connect the dots. But in the meantime, while we're waiting for 2028 or 2038, whatever it ends up doing, they seem to always have a tendency to run out of money when it comes to us up here in the colonies, you know? And it might be even longer. But in the meantime, people are still having to go across the gauntlet. And I challenged Margie, the executive director of SB CAG, to come up with her walking shoes so we could go across them. I was teasing her, I was going to make her do that, but, but it's Lompokans have to. You want to increase a bike tourism, a bike component, or safety, let's be able to get across the river. Let's, let's step up in, again, more of a statement than a question, but questioning why we're not, you know, shooting for the stars on these and getting this, and trying to redeem the hundreds of thousands of dollars that council invested already. I think it was impact fee money, I think they spent a lot of that, where a lot of that money came from, because I think it was the Central Avenue extension that they were going to cross, the bridge, that they were going to go across that, and they stopped charging the impact fees, so they redirected the funds. So I'm just saying, it just seems like, great plan, I don't want to, don't go with that, you guys did a lot of good work here, but I just really believe a good artery getting us across that way would really taken it over the top. You know, I mean, you guys, hopefully you see the people trying to make it across, going east, and taking their life into their own hands. And I don't know how many people really, maybe accidents, in other words, one in December of last year, I'm still trying to find out what happened on the bridge. I asked the SB CAG to give me that, they still haven't told me what the, you know, remember when it took out part of the guardrail? And a lot of accidents are happening in that vicinity, maybe the person who's on the bridge isn't getting hit, but somebody swerving and dodging that person and causing another accident. And just the other side of that bridge, we've had at least two fatalities in the last two years, pedestrian and vehicle fatalities, just a little bit right out of your map, 100 yards away or so. So I like what you guys hear, but I just really believe that Lompoc, we need to shoot for a little higher and a little farther, and have some consistency of going to the next level, if that makes sense to what we're doing. And nothing against you, I know there was directions going different ways, but, and I know, except for him, you know, the rest of the council, and I happen to be in the audience and watching that, but we need to carry on with our, as we're moving forward. You know, take it to the next level, and, you know, thank goodness we haven't had more people die in that area, that vicinity, but you would just definitely increase, you know, to our largest park, right? I think it's our largest park in the city.
So I really appreciate all of the efforts and connections you made with all of the different entities that needed to provide input. I did compare the current bike path and walking maps versus the proposed, and several of the places that I am very aware that just dead-end, and you have to hunt for a way over to connect our planned-to-be connection, including the one that is along the river, does have a proposed connection, so I do see that, and I do see the space along Central and H where there is, you know, dead space between what goes up to Hancock and suddenly disappears as you come to the city. What I'm feeling is missing, and I know it's difficult because it's, again, having to work with Caltrans, but Highway 1 is designated as the state's bike tourism path through town. And what we failed to document here is that is the way the bike tourism comes into town, and there is no shoulder, there is no bike lane along H or Ocean that is designated the one for them to travel through safely. And so they have to deal with traffic, being aware enough to provide them that three-foot passing distance without us providing protective lanes. And so I think it's a failure of ours not to at least document that need and make the appeal with Caltrans, that that needs to be something they need to look into and partner with us to address if we are going to be the state-designated pathway, because they are told to get off and come down Highway 1 as bike tourism by the state, by Caltrans, and yet inside our city limits, they have not provided a safe passage for bicycle tourism. It is a huge revenue draw. Bicycle tourists do not want to leave their main traffic because it takes you away from your hotel options, from your restaurant options, from your grocery options, from your bike repair shops. And all of our bike paths, as you hit town, go, you need to shoot two blocks this way, you need to go five blocks that way, and throws them into neighborhoods which are wonderful, and we have accommodated, but it takes them away. So I think one way to solve the tourism aspect is to identify the need and then appeal to our partners about how they're going to provide that, and we support them doing that as a way to address it and not impact what the key grant this came from, which is safe routes to school, which is those habits we all develop early and often, learning the proper ways to ride safely, walk safely, to and from home, school, and our businesses. Then we grow into individuals that are comfortable and confident to be in traffic and do bike tourism. So I want to find a way to advocate for tourism and not impact what we absolutely need for our community, and I think one way to do that might be to definitely identify the need and the lack, and what it would look like, and then find ways to make that connection. But I feel we do a disservice also to not document it in our master plan, that it's a need to have that route and provide that for those that are truly visitors to our community, do come here, do want to spend time here, and if they don't feel safe and they don't feel it's a protected route that encourages them to spend time here, they will spend most of their time trying to get through town, to leave town, and go somewhere else that feels more... that feels more welcoming. And that's the last thing you want to do, is make sure that they feel like they aren't welcome in town because there isn't a safe place to ride where they're told by all of the state maps they should ride. So that's the part I feel like is missing. Councilmember Cordova.
So, I had a conversation with you Friday of last week after I attended the meeting, and I expressed to you my concern about us not addressing the tourism component, or not having it listed as a priority yet. Explore Lompoc was obviously at the table for the first round of comments when it came to this. So I do agree with that. I think it's important for us to address our community issues, and I stated that to you. I do think that the safety and security of our children, making it to school safely, that's a major concern. But having the tourism component be a part of it from this stage, I think is necessary as well. And if we could figure out a way, like Mayor Osborne said, to put that in, that would be amazing, because one of the things that will allow us the opportunity to have revenue for public safety is tourism, and that is a major generator for us to be able to do that. So, there's more than just the normal bike tourism groups that come in, there's way more out there that we could solicit, as Explore Lompoc, we could solicit if we had the means to be able to do that. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments for staff before we take it to public comment?
Sorry, I'd like to just say one more thing. There were five projects that I did include in the pedestrian bicycle master plan, and I felt the community needed them, and those five projects I had to omit from the project list because they weren't included in the circulation element of the general plan. And so I think that what that tells us, and these are projects, Ocean Avenue bike lanes, H Street bike lanes, Robinson Bridge Crossing, the Class 1 path from Allen Hancock College to Anovera Village, and a bike lanes for Pine Street. So those were the five projects we had to omit because they're not included in the circulation element. So I think we do need to amend the circulation element.
Absolutely, and I think that's important for us to know, because we're the body that can make those requests and recommendations. So letting us know that and making that recommendation as part of making this adjustment, I think would be key, so that we don't have to start out with a plan that needs to be adapted a year from now, rather, it goes out the gate as good as it can from the beginning, knowing it's always fluid, but is much more improved than just checking boxes. So anything that you need us to do, because you weren't able to do it because of something else that we also are required to oversee, should come back to us with recommendations from you to make those adjustments. So thank you for sharing that, because wouldn't have known that otherwise.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns before we go to public comment? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. We'll now open the floor for public comment. The phone number is 805-875-8201, and please mute your TV, PC, or radio if you call in, 805-875-8201, and we'll begin with in-room public comments.
John Lynn Lompoke resident. So, Mr. Starbuck kept looking at me, so I wanted to recap how we ended up with money to do that study. There was study money in SB CAG for the Central Avenue Bridge, which the council, without me voting on it because I had a conflict, decided wasn't something that we were going to be able to have any time in the foreseeable future, and that study money was then moved over to looking at alternatives for that bike crossing. I think the staff has made it very clear that what you need to do this evening is you need to direct them to make the appropriate amendments to the circulation element of the general plan and return them to you prior to submitting this new bike plan. And I'm sure you were listening, and he ticked off a list of things, but perhaps you could say to him your list and the bridge across the river. I think the mayor's point with regard to getting bike paths for tourism is absolutely vital. There is a lot of bike tourism, and we gain some when we put in the new bike routes, but there's certainly room for improvement. Mr. Mosby is correct, we were in line for an ATP grant, but for whatever reason, we didn't get our paperwork in, and so we missed the line. And maybe the problem is that we didn't amend the general plan so that we could amend the bike plan so that we could apply for the ATP grant, but no one ever mentioned that in the past. Thank you for staff for doing that this evening and pointing out where we're stumbling. I believe that that bridge for pedestrians and bikes would become a focal point, and people would be pretty interested in riding across it. Obviously, the Mississippi River is substantially bigger, but the city of Memphis, Tennessee, took an unused auto lane on an old railroad bridge and refurbished it, and it is, people come from very large distances to come there and hike and ride their bike across, because I think it's one of the few places you can actually do it. Well, I would venture to say that this will be the coolest bridge across the San Ynez, since the one down at H Street's kind of hung on the side and maybe not quite as appealing. So those would be my recommendations, you know, give the staff direction to move forward and make those changes to the circulation element, and then include the tourism portion, and let's make some good things happen. Thank you.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoke City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Yes, riding bicycles, I've ridden bicycles here in Lompoke for eight years, going everywhere in Lompoke. Now, riding a bicycle, you're supposed to ride going with traffic on the right-hand side and not on the sidewalk. Now, if you go down H Street or Ocean, there is no lines for bicycles, and the amount of space you have between the sidewalk and the traffic going by you is probably about two feet. It is unbelievable. Times that I've come so close to people hitting me because I didn't want to ride on the sidewalk, dodged the pedestrians, and the litter on the right-hand side of the road is terrible, where you can't, you're dodging the litter, and you're dodging the traffic, and you're dodging the sidewalk, because you don't want to ride on the sidewalk because you'd be dodging the pedestrians too. So, keeping it clean on the right-hand side, especially in those areas where there's most traffic, unlike, say, Ocean and H, keeping it more clean would be a benefit for bicyclists. And I'm not sure if the Lompoke Police Department now is giving tickets out for bicyclists riding on the sidewalks now, or riding against traffic. I know they were before, because I got plenty of tickets before, and they went on towards my driver's license, come to believe that I didn't pay the tickets, and they got put on my driver's license, where I couldn't get a driver's license until I paid those tickets. So I have no idea now, because they don't bother me anymore, and I usually don't ride against traffic or ride on the sidewalks anymore. I ride on the right-hand side on the street going with traffic, and you're saying that you want to get grants to help out bicycle lanes and things like that, well, maybe you should start off with the major parts of Lompoke, like on H, Central, right-hand, Ocean. And thank you, Mr. Mosby, for talking about the Robinson Bridge. Now, isn't that the bridge where all the homeless people come down the hill there and go over the bridge? Because I used to be going there at that homeless shelter myself, and going over that bridge is unbelievable with a bicycle. And there's a lot of people at that homeless shelter now that are going over that bridge every morning and every afternoon when they have to go back to the shelter. I mean, it's crazy. And a lot of people now, they don't even, bicyclists.
I'm sorry, your time's up. You can wrap it up, please.
Okay. Well, a lot of bicyclists are, they don't know if they can ride on the sidewalk or not, or what is the state law? I mean, I believe it is, you cannot ride your bicycle on the sidewalk, and I'm just saying, please improve the right-hand side from where the traffic is to the sidewalk on that right-hand side so a bicyclist can ride down the road. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mosby, for bringing your effort on that bridge.
Any written comments on this matter? Seeing no additional in-room comments and no additional phone calls, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. I believe that you are going to bring it back to us on June 2nd for approval. Is that enough time for you to also make a recommendation for element changes in the circulation element, or should that come back later? I mean, what's the, I know that approving something that doesn't match our general plan, but I also know making changes to the general plan take time and require review, and I don't want to rush that, but I also don't want to approve a plan that you need to bring back in two months.
Yeah, I think we can address some of the comments in the plan to the extent they're consistent with the circulation element within the time that we have before we need to close the grant, but also start the process of the circulation element amendment, and then bring the plan back as soon as the circulation element is amended, if that works for you.
I believe that would work for all of us, as long as we don't let it drop off the list of things, because I know we have other general element changes we want to make. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment. There's, I have several councilmember Vega, myself, changes that are going to be proposed to council as an ad hoc on the general plan, and if you could give those to myself, Christie, somebody, and we would include that with our, because we are going to have a meeting here fairly soon about some of these changes to the general plan, so it could be all done at one time.
Great. So bring back the recommendation on your scheduled plan, so we meet our deadline, would be my motion, followed by making the update to the circulation element and updating this plan once that is done, so that we have the most accurate plan on record for applying for grants. Councilmember Cordova seconded. Any questions or concerns? All right, let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you so very much for that hard work, really appreciate it. All right, any written communications other than what has been mentioned earlier? Thank you. The oral communication on City Matters for two minutes is now open. You can call at 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your radio, PC, or TV when you call in, 805-875-8201, and we will begin with in-room oral communications for two minutes.
So, about six meetings, six weeks ago, I stood up here and I said that we were going to be short money for the fireworks show, and I would put in 1,000 bucks, and I wrote that check. Mr. Gonzalez said he would put in 500 bucks, and he wrote that check at the foundation. And earlier, or the end of last week, I reached out to the Chumash, because back when I was mayor, and it was my responsibility to raise money for the fireworks show every year prior to the advent of Safe and Sane Sales, they always donated, and I called them up and I said to them, you know, you've always donated, and if you would be interested in being involved in this, we'd certainly love to have you. And I got an email from them Monday, and they've, they'll be putting $2,000 into it. So there's my 3,500, and if we're still a little short, I stand here and promise that I will pay it if I can't raise it from someone else. So, thank you so much.
No one called in? All right, so seeing no additional oral communications, we'll close that and bring it around to council comments and meeting reports, and we'll begin with councilmember Mosby.
So I did represent the city of Lompoke last week for the SB CAG subregional meeting. I too have gone out and asked about monies. I committed myself to paying $1,000 to the fireworks show, asked the city attorney, and he'd already said that his firm was gonna do 1,250, and he was kicking down the extra 250 to keep it up to 1,500. That's a head nod, yes. Talked with one of the local businesses, Elevate, in town. They said they're good for 2,500, and challenging with Tina Mercer and her Festival Association group. I don't know where they are now, but they were at 500, and I know somebody else with another 200, and I think they're trying to get up to four grand. They want to try to match what I can come up with, but where we are right now is we're about $9,200 between Mr. Lynn and what I've rolled together as well. So I would just say that I think we're pretty darn close to being able to pull off the show, and I would say the 10 grand that were challenged, I'd like to, hopefully some of the other councilmembers were able to bring in some monies. I know I kind of cheated a little bit, count the city attorney's monies, but just trying to coordinate, balance it all, and get there, but I believe that we're, we're there good for the 10, we're right close to, well, Mr. Lynn said he'd make the difference up anyways. So, you know, but there's still money coming in, and I think there might be a little extra, talking with Mr. Albert today, that there might have been a little extra than the 15 grand in the account from leftover from last year as well, so looks like we can find a place.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Vega?
Couple things. There was a question asked, and I'm just gonna bring this up. Cruise night was normally scheduled for the 29th, so I'll just leave that up as a question to the city manager, see if they're gonna be able to pull that off. Also, it's not a meeting and report, but I'd like to see if we can have, at least the police chief once in a while here, give us an update on police personnel and the hiring progress, if any, you know, on a regular basis. I'd like to be a supporter to make sure we're doing our part, just in case there is some movement there. And the other thing I'd like to do, a shout out to a business owner here in Lompoke, Mr. George Bedford, I'd like to say happy birthday, sir, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Cordova?
So, I know that we were gonna be getting back the staff report in regards to the fireworks display and, I guess, the impact on the couple of locations in regards to our fire or our police department and how that would work. I just wanted to throw something out there and see if this was an option that the council would consider to bring back with that report. For Allen Hancock College as a location, I think that maybe in the area where they have the track where the police does their patrol, I don't know if that's an area that can be looked at. I think there's plenty of parking there. I think having it in that height would allow for most of the community to see it, whereas opposed to the two locations that we are currently looking at right now, have limited visibility for our actual residents. So I'm not sure if that's something that can be added into as far as looking at that portion.
I would be happy to support that being added, to reach out to Hancock and see if they'd be willing to let us utilize that. So I guess you need a third to add that to the report. I see Mr. Starbuck nodding his head, so I will assume he's giving you his third since...
Appreciate that. You're stellar. I also wanted to see about getting, a second council request, see about getting an update. I know that the last presentation we had from... I know that the last presentation we had from our financial officer, or from Dean, was in regards to a particular part of the year that took us right before COVID. And I would like to get a financial update from our city manager, or from our city manager and from Dean in regards to our financial update as we've been going through this COVID. I'm really concerned, and I want to make sure that we have a recovery plan for this city as we move forward and we're able to assess whatever financial damage the city may or may not. I know that Dean was very optimistic, and I appreciated that in that in that meeting. But I'd like to see about maybe getting an update for that, perhaps maybe by June, once we start seeing the actual restrictions lifted and we're able to actually see some of our businesses go back into operational mode.
Councilmember Mosby?
You have the review of the biannual budget for June 2. Is there something you could add on in there already? So it's coming up June 2 already then?
Okay. But it'll, and it'll include, though, specifically, I want to specifically look at the months when COVID affected our community.
One of the downsides of us not being the one that gets the tax revenues, which is the big component that I'm unsure about, is it has to go to the California Department of Fees and Tax, whatever. We don't really see those results until July or August. We do see a lot of other results. I can report on those. But really, I'm kind of in a wait-and-see pattern. But I'll do the best I can to update on June 2. I was planning on doing it tonight. Had a personal issue. My uncle died, and I just stalled a little bit, and I'll be back on June 2.
I'm sorry to hear that, Dean, but thank you. I appreciate that. As much information as we could get, that's great. So as long as, I guess, the council agrees with that.
Well, I think that we all understand that much of the state doesn't know how much it's affected yet. They're predicting a massive budget deficit. The county is getting some of their report. And as Dean stated, the CDFTA won't have all of our numbers for us till unfortunately July or August. So I think what might be helpful is regular reports as you do get those numbers. And maybe find a way just to add it maybe to the city manager report on, based on new reports that we're receiving from the tax departments or the different entities that provide that, here's an update and where our adjustments are. And I think just adding it maybe to the city manager report, rather than always having to have a full, formal report, might help us better identify what our issues might be and how we can start planning for them in the fall, when we finally do have a better picture of how the state's affected, how that funding's affecting us, and also ultimately what the federal government's decision is on the potential funding packages for cities and counties that is currently a football being passed back and forth between the House and the Senate at the federal level. Represented the city regarding tank, which is Transmission Area Network Committee regarding the fact that we have our power transmitted across power lines that we pay fees into and decisions regarding that. There are several ongoing legislative updates and constant updates from different areas within the county and the state and the federal level. And finally, advocating on our behalf to exclude the prison from the count, which that has happened. The state has adjusted. And again, as you heard, the Board of Supervisors is filing the documents that they hope will be approved by end of week. And as we hear that information, additional businesses will be able to open through a plan that is part of the RISE document that we will make sure is linked to on our city website. There are several pages. I believe it's page 45 through 47 that you can go to and identify your industry. And there is a hyperlink in that document that then leads to the things you will need to do in order to attest to what you are doing, in order to post the signage and reopen when that phase is open, if it's not already open for you. There are a couple of additional industries that unfortunately are in Stage Three and Four, but RISE, the document, has those pages as well. And it is a very searchable document. So we'll make sure it's linked to our city website regarding COVID for you to have that access to. And then finally, this county will be putting together an entire website based around that. They have ready sbc.org right now. And if you dig through there, that's where you will find the RISE document. But they plan to have an independent page focused solely on reopening and what that document contains and how to assist you. And they will have a phone number to call and get more information, especially for those industries that may not be specifically listed in it. And any of us can make an appeal on behalf of some of those industries that aren't specifically. So if you're having concerns and cannot find that information, please feel free to reach out to myself, any of the councilmembers or the city manager. And we can contact the county department that is overseeing these to find out more information for you. We will adjourn to the next Long Polk City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 2, 2020. And have a good evening.